Evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting on June 5th, 2012. Welcome to all of you, both here in our council chambers, as well as those watching. For those of you who are new, or you haven't been here for a while, our staff reports are on the wall to your right. And please, if you could turn off your cellphones so that we don't have any audio problems this evening. I'll start the meeting with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Next, Pledge of Allegiance. If I could please ask Lieutenant Belmer if he could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice.
Thank you. And we'll hear from Lieutenant Belmer in just a couple more minutes when he introduces our newest member of our community. We'll move on to a closed session report. Do we have a closed session report?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, or is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is public comment. And this is the time when anyone in the public would like to bring up an item that we are not already planning to speak about on tonight's agenda. I would invite Lieutenant Belmer, if you're prepared to come up and make your introduction now, let's do it now. And again, congratulations on your promotion. Well-earned.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I first would just, before I get started, would like to thank everybody for the almost four years that I've been here. It's been a great ride. Much different than the rest of my law enforcement career, and I learned a real lot, especially about small-town politics, small-town problems, how to solve them. But some problems you just can't solve, Louis. But it was a great ride. We picked someone to take my place that I think is going to fit in perfectly. It'd be Sergeant Doug Wilkinson. And he'll come up in a minute and tell you a little bit about himself. Captain Stewart's also here, but she's trying to hide so she doesn't have to say anything. But like I said, it's been a great ride. I met a lot of great people, had a great time up here.
Well, on behalf of the entire council and the staff, we really appreciate all that you did and how you interact with our community. You really get it when it comes to small-town community police work and how to interact with residents and have a level of tolerance, yet, you know, firmness, too. So we really appreciate that and look forward to that continuing.
My new position also, Yountville's encompassing that as well, so I'm not really going anywhere. I'll be back from time to time.
How good.
Great. Well, next up. Welcome, Sergeant.
Good evening. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm a Napa native. I have 20 years of law enforcement experience. The last 15 years I've been with Napa. I was promoted to Sergeant about three years ago, and in that time, I've been supervising mainly the whole valley. I just want to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to come and work in Yountville. I know that I have some big shoes to fill, but I'll do the best job that I can, and I look forward to working with you all.
Great. Thanks very much. Welcome, Sergeant Wilkinson. And if I could just ask everybody to recognize Lieutenant Belmer for his years of service here in Yountville, so thank you. Thanks very much, Belmer. Next up, are there any other comments from the public before we move on to our agenda items? Seeing no one move forward, let's move on to Item 7, which is our consent calendar.
(Inaudible).
There you go. Thank you.
That means you're never coming again?
Captain, thank you for stopping in as well.
(Inaudible).
We have three generations of sergeants right there, so much appreciated. Our consent calendar. Are there any questions, changes, or is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, presentations. And we have a special presentation this evening. A very longtime resident of Yountville is being recognized, and I'm going to read a proclamation, a certificate of special recognition for Margaret Ingles-Herald. And she has several longtime friends with us here this evening, and I understand that she very likely is watching us this evening. So, welcome to the council meeting. But if I could ask Carla Rife and Betty Jake to please join me at the podium.
(Inaudible) speak right into the microphone. This is a certificate of special recognition in honor of Margaret Ingles-Herald. Whereas Margaret Ingles-Herald was born in 1914 and will celebrate her 98th birthday on June 12th. And whereas Margaret is a fourth-generation San Franciscan who moved to the Napa Valley wine country over 50 years ago, when Yountville was a sleepy agriculture town full of, quote, "beer joints and one grocery store." And whereas Margaret has been involved with numerous community and volunteer activities, including as a founder and former vice president of the Friends of the Yountville Library, where she has been a member since 1987, as a volunteer at the California Veterans Home in Yountville, and with many native daughters of the Golden West over the years. And whereas Margaret has been known for her artistic talents and was the winner of the Town Seal Design Contest sponsored by the Yountville Improvement Club after Town Incorporated in 1965. She illustrated numerous brochures for the town, including renderings of Yountville landmarks for local commercial use. And whereas Margaret is a longtime parishioner of St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church here in Yountville. And whereas Margaret was married to Charlie Harold, who served as Yountville postmaster and as president of the original Yountville Chamber of Commerce. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, on behalf of the entire Yountville community, hereby present a certificate of special recognition to longtime Yountville resident Margaret Ingles-Herald in honor of her contributions to the development of Yountville and to recognize her 98th birthday. Congratulations and happy birthday.
As one of the designated receivers of this long overdue recognition of Margaret Herald along with Betty Jake, I wanted to mention again that she had put in countless hours as a behind-the-scenes artist with no compensation, and she was the founder of your now very successful Friends of the Library. Margaret thanks you all, and she invites you all to her birthday party next Tuesday between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. so that she can thank you personally and you can thank her.
Thank you very much for being here. And thank you again, Margaret, for all that you've done for the town, and happy birthday. And thank you for all of you for being here. I think parking is going to be limited at the birthday party next Tuesday. So carpool or walk. Are there any other presentations? I think that covers us for this evening. If not, we're going to move on to our public hearing for tonight, which is Hotel Yountville Hopper Creek Apartments, Master Development Plan Amendment and Development Agreement Amendment. Let's start with a staff report, please.
Well, the history behind this project is that in 2006, the master development plan and the development agreement were approved by the town council for the Hotel Yountville affordable housing and hotel expansion. And it, the elements of the project were a 32-room expansion of the hotel and a 25-unit affordable housing project. And the DA that was approved with the project listed the different elements of the project that were deemed important, and I've excerpted some of those in the staff report. And the three that are worth noting are that the farmhouse was to be preserved and converted into affordable housing units, and a recreation room and laundry room were to be provided for the tenants, that there was to be an integration of commercial and residential uses, but that these were to be separated from one another by Hopper Creek and Champagne Drive, and Champagne Drive was to be realigned to achieve this purpose. And in the end, the hotel was located on a separate and independent parcel, as was the apartment complex. In 2009, a master development plan amendment was approved that involved the relocation of two of the units in the farmhouse to different buildings on site. And what occurred after they were moved out of the farmhouses is that the full ground floor was then devoted to the common uses of the affordable housing tenants. And it was larger than the original approval by approximately 50%. A condition of approval was imposed on the master development plan that limited the ground floor of the farmhouse to the use and enjoyment of the tenants and prohibited the hotel guests or users from utilizing the space. In 2010, the hotel was completed, and then in 2011, the affordable housing project was completed. And as of today's date, the 25 units or 40% are occupied. So the proposal before you tonight is to reconfigure the ground floor of the farmhouse to allow Hotel Yountville to have hotel use, office use in a portion of the space. And the applicant indicates that there's insufficient space available that's unused at the hotel site, that to be located on-site, it would require the conversion of an existing use, and this obviously is not desirable. So they're proposing the relocation of these employees to an off-site location in close proximity, and that's the farmhouse. There are about 10 management employees with Hotel Yountville, and half of these are located in temporary quarters, four of which are temporarily located in one of the vacant housing units at the apartment complex, and this is in noncompliance with the approved permit. Others are located in temporary meeting space or other hotel space as availability demands. And it's these employees that would be relocated to the farmhouse. The proposed floor plan is shown behind you on the bulletin board, and what it illustrates is that the hotel office use would occupy the front half of the building facing Washington Street, and the recreation room for the tenants would be located at the rear portion of the building in a more inward-facing location on the property. And as I noted earlier, each of the two uses would occupy approximately 50% of the space. And the situation before you is one that staff sees time and time again where the full extent of the use is not fully considered during the entitlement stage, and a project is developed to the maximum FAR, and yet an operator later wants to modify the project, perhaps intensify the uses, and there's little or no room for expansion. So the options in this type of case are to provide the needed space on-site, in which case, in this case, it would require the conversion of one use to another, or relocating the use off-site. And the applicant obviously wants to relocate in close proximity, and it's noted that moving off-site in Yountville most likely means locating out of town. So the first issue before you is the policy obtained in the development agreement and the condition of approval on the master development plan. And the development agreement policy separated the lodging uses from the residential uses, and this was achieved through the realignment of Champagne Drive. The condition of approval on the master development plan is that the farmhouse was for the exclusive use of the tenants and not to be used by the hotel. So if these restrictions are eliminated, it opens the discussion on whether to allow the hotel to use a portion of this space or not. And both the hotel and the apartments are located in the planned development zoning district, and that district permits a mixture of land uses, and it permits a combination or integration of commercial and residential uses on a single parcel. So that could be used to support the blending of these uses in the farmhouse, but it would require the town council to reverse a decision already made that these uses should be separated from one another. The second issue is whether the reduced size of the recreation room is sufficient to meet the needs of the tenants. And the recreation room is intended to serve a variety of purposes, most significantly perhaps as a place to host parties and gatherings because the units themselves are so small and it's not feasible to hold that type of activity within the units. And in support of the applicant's request is the fact that the original approval before the two units were moved out of the farmhouse provided a comparable amount of space, and in fact, the recreation room and the laundry room had the same footprint as are proposed here. And in addition, Napa Valley Community Housing has provided a letter of support for the reduced size of the space, and they've gone on to indicate that 195 square feet could have met the tenants' needs, whereas the applicant is proposing approximately 400 square feet. On the other hand, however, is the fact that the apartments were only 40% occupied, so we don't really fully know the space needs of the use and whether this would be adequate or not. We just don't have the history. If the council is open to allowing the hotel use, office use, to use the farmhouse, parking is one of the issues to be considered. And at the apartment complex, there are 39 spaces in the parking lot, and this is the minimum necessary to meet the 25 units and the office space for the affordable housing units. So the hotel office use potentially has a premium. However, staff thinks, believes this impact can be mitigated. The applicant, Hotel Yountville, has a parking management policy that directs the 10 management employees to park on-site. Other employees are directed to park on the street adjacent to the hotel or south of the hotel. But if the 10 management employees were to park in the lot and these spaces were marked for their use, we could be certain that they're not parking over at the farmhouse, and this could be sufficient to satisfy that requirement. The last issue is the management of the Hopper Creek Apartments, and they were completed in 2011, and yet they're just 40% occupied. And staff acknowledges that there's a greater outreach and advertising that's necessary to fill the housing, the affordable housing units, which perhaps accounts for some of the difficulty, and that Napa Valley Community Housing specializes in filling these units, and they're successful at doing so. And in order to meet the goals and intent of affordable housing in our community, it could be beneficial for them to manage this site. I note that the applicant has indicated they've had some early discussions with Napa Valley Community Housing, and Napa Valley Community Housing has indicated that they may be interested as well. And if this project moves forward, staff would suggest a condition that formalizes this relationship. But because of the policy issues that are before you with regards to the separation of uses and the use of the farmhouse, staff is asking that you hold a public hearing and then provide direction to staff on the type of resolution you'd like to see brought back before you at the next meeting, and that it would probably occur on the consent calendar. So one option is to find that the office use is inconsistent with the requirements of the planned development zoning district, the development agreement, and the master development plan approvals for the project and deny the project. On the other hand, you could find that they are consistent and direct staff to amend the DA and to draft a resolution for the use and the approval. And if you select this option, staff asks that you discuss and consider different conditions you would like to see attached to the project, some of which I've noted in the staff report, and we'll bring it back to you at your next meeting. Thank you.
Any questions about the staff report before we open the public hearing? Couple of questions that I've got. Just to be clear, earlier in the report, you didn't address it verbally, but you mentioned some of the employees are using vacant apartment units for office space. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And that's who we're talking about potentially relocating into the farmhouse?
Yeah, those that are temporarily using a unit that should be used for housing, which is not in compliance with their permit.
And there's not a proposed increase in the number of staff that we're talking about here?
We're talking about existing employees.
And there's not an increase in parking on-site that we're talking about, or is there?
No, because those 10 employees are directed to park in the hotel lot, and they would continue to park in that lot, we're suggesting that the spaces be marked for their use to ensure that they are definitely used for that purpose.
And they have enough overflow parking for the hotel use that they can dedicate 10 and not be noncompliant?
That leaves 81 spaces that aren't marked, and there are 80 hotel rooms, so with the presumption that one space per room...
And that meets the requirement that we have for that site?
It does.
Okay. No other questions at this time? Councilmember Hall?
Yes, thank you, Sandra. Just a couple of questions. Do we know, maybe Kathleen's the best person to direct this at, do we know the current occupancy or average occupancy for the property? Because I mean, what it sounds, I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to figure out, they're not fully occupied, I mean, do they run occupancy for the hotel? Maybe we should know that because it's part of the TOT reporting.
Eventually, we'll get to that. When you have your chance, we'll, if you could address that.
Do we know that answer?
If it's coming from the applicant, I'm going to wait until we...
No, I'm asking staff, because we manage the TOT, at least the reporting of that, so...
We do know the occupancy of the hotel.
Is it less than 100%?
Well, most hotels are under less than 100%.
Because there's a structural occupancy, yes, I understand.
This hotel's doing well, and they are at or on the higher end of the Yountville norms for the last year.
For rate, but occupancy as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's my first question. I just want to make sure I understand in the staff report, Sandra, you guys, you say in the second page that the First Amendment allowed the elimination of two of the workforce housing units and the relocation elsewhere. Was there a specific rationale behind it? I mean, I didn't go back and look at expressly why that was, I mean, why did they determine at that point in time that two were going to be moved out of the farmhouse and put elsewhere?
I think because the three units were studio units in the farmhouse, and they thought that larger units would meet the needs of tenants better, and if they were able to move them out of the farmhouse, they could increase the size.
I see. Okay.
And one of the buildings, of the three buildings on-site, one of them was partially one-story and partially two-story, so it provided the space to make it a full two-story and add the units at the end.
Okay. Okay. And just with regards to what's recently come out from ABAG and where this number of units that we have, I mean, because in principle, what we're also sort of understanding here is that we're going to be eliminating a couple of units, and if we were to agree with this, would we be eliminating any units at all? Okay, so it's not going to affect us with the amount of, or the number of affordable housing units that we have today?
No, there's no change proposed to the units.
That's, just wanted to confirm, I understood that. All right. That's all for now.
With no other questions for staff right now, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak on this, and then we'll invite public to comment after that. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
And if you could raise that microphone up towards you a little bit, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Steve Davino. I'm the general manager of Hotel Yountville. I actually have, I guess, two exciting stories to tell. One is, Sandra, since last we applied, the apartment occupancy now is 15. We've got 15 occupied, and three are pending. They look very good, they tell me today, so we're looking at about 18 occupied, so we've got about seven left, so, which is very good. So that's going in the right direction. The other exciting story, I think, is that the hotel is very successful. Hotel Yountville's doing very well, to answer your question. We're, you know, well above 80%. We finished last month with about 82% occupancy at about $400 and something dollar average rate, which is very good for the town. This month, we're already at 82%, and we're just starting the month, so it's going to be another successful month. Our average rate continues to rise, and we're doing very well. So that's the other exciting part of the story. You know, I think I'll turn the clock back a little bit. I think when the hotel was developed, we thought we had ample space for management of the hotel. And the reality is, is that the hotel's turned in, you know, gone from a mid-range, kind of a very successful mid-range hotel, to a boutique luxury hotel with guests paying a lot of money and that are frankly very demanding. So with that, we have to provide a high level of service and accommodation for them, which really has required more, the management, if you will, and a bit more staffing. I think, you know, that's created the situation where we now have these managers, and we're looking for a place to put them, and we need additional office space. So we did temporarily use one of the apartments, because they've been vacant, as a place to put people, just temporarily until we could figure this out and figure out a direction as to where to go with the management team. But there's really five people that we're looking to relocate. Five of them are already in the hotel, which will stay in the hotel. And then we've got this additional space, which is frankly quite large in the farmhouse, so we thought it logical to look at amending this and moving into that space for those offices.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
Councilmember Dornbecker, questions of the applicant?
Hello, yes. How many offices are located in the hotel near the lobby or whatever?
Yeah, we've got five, five people in offices already that are fine and that, you know, were designed from the outset.
I noticed that you're among the people who would be designated to be in the farmhouse. So I'm interested in finding out, how would this impact you with the noise from the tenants in the recreation room? And would you feel that you would have security in your office? And, I mean, how do you feel about that?
You know, the design and layout of the space, I don't know if you've seen it, I mean, it's hard to tell on the floor plan, but it is quite large and it's quite separate. There's soundproofing in the walls, so we don't view that as, at all, as a challenge. In fact, I think it'll work out fine.
All right. And then, let's see if I have some other questions. What do you think about participating with the Napa County Housing Group, the nonprofit that handles that? Is that something that is, you're open to, you're amenable to?
Yeah, I think the, obviously, the objective is, from a business point of view, is to rent all the spaces, just like it is in the hotel, around 100%. And it's taken a bit of time to get, you know, occupancy in those units. And we do see encouragement, and we feel that with the current strategy, and I reviewed it today, really, is that we can fill the space and those units with the management we have.
And with the management you have, so you're not interested in the Napa Housing?
I know there's been some discussion with the Napa County Housing. I don't know, Joan, if you have any input on that, but I don't exactly deal with that particularly, but I know there's been some discussion, and I'm not exactly sure where it stands.
And, I'm sorry, I had another one, but that sort of went out of my mind after this one. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I have several questions. So what was your original plan for renting out these affordable units? We hear a lot about the great need in California for affordable housing.
Sure.
I don't think there's one person in Yountville who would deny that there's certainly a need for affordable housing, and now seems that you've had a real problem renting these things out, and such a problem, they were empty for quite a time, that you actually moved your office into them. So was there, no one trying to rent something that...
Sure. The, I think the original intent was to try to get people that live there that actually worked in Yountville, so they, people live and work in Yountville. So I think there was some selectivity involved at the beginning to make sure that we, instead of having people from American Canyon come up or wherever else, Napa, that we had, you know, people who could live and work in Yountville. So I think that was the original strategy, and then that didn't yield enough occupancy, and now we've broadened that and reached out further to fill the spaces. So...
So you were just in one of the studios that was difficult to rent, your office?
Right. It's actually, we were in one of the two-bedroom apartments.
And that was difficult to rent?
Uh-huh.
Wow. That's surprising.
But as I say, you know, it's picking up now, and now we've got seven, you know, seven left to occupy, and I think that's, actually, those numbers are looking pretty good.
So what, so originally, you were just looking for people in Yountville. What's, how did you specifically go look for them, and what's kind of changed now that there's been a rapid increase here?
Yeah, I think if I look at the strategy that was taken, it's, you know, it's been to reach out to all the businesses in Yountville to make sure everybody's aware that when they have, when they hire people, this is available. There are ads in newspapers, there are open houses, there's outreach into Napa through Napa Valley Community Housing. And that's been the strategy. And again, as I say, it has been working positively, so we're going to continue to do that, and the feeling is that we can, you know, get it to 100%. do that, and the feeling is that we can, you know, get it to 100% occupancy.
Do you have a target date with your plan?
For occupancy?
For 100%?
You know, we looked at, similarly, we tried to look at Bardessono, you know, with, I actually went over there and looked at their facility and looked at their space, and that's kind of how we, along with Sandra and a few others, came up with the design of the space, but, you know, and spoke with them a little bit, and it seemed like it took them a little while to occupy as well, and I think it's just this ramp-up period. But the objective, I think, for everybody here is to occupy these units, and that's the plan to do that. It takes, you know, a few more months, or three months, you know, I'm not 100% sure, but we do know the urgency of trying to get those things rented from the Towne Yountville's perspective, and frankly, from a business perspective.
Okay, so I want to go back to talk a little bit about, it seemed like it took everybody at the hotel by surprise when you realized that there was all this management coming in, and there wasn't enough office space. I'd like to hear a little bit more about why that, how that didn't get planned for.
I don't, I don't think it's the outset, we completely understood how successful and the positioning of the hotel. I mean, the way hotels operate is this, if you're in the mid-range of a hotel in terms of positioning, you only have to provide a certain level of staffing, and the more you charge, the more rates you charge, the more services you need to provide. I'll give you an example. In the old Yountville Inn, we took all reservations at the front desk, for example, and now, with a luxury boutique hotel, it's very hard to check guests in and, at the same time, take a reservation and say, excuse me, let me put you on hold, let me take this reservation, and it's just not the service you can provide in a luxury boutique hotel. So we had to then take reservations off of the front desk to provide a great, you know, guest experience. That took up some space, we didn't realize exactly we needed to occupy. Now, we do 67% of our reservations come through that reservations department, we do a lot of concierge work for every guest that calls, and it takes a lot of time, and we book all the restaurants in town, you know, through that pre-arrival service. So it's really a matter of service level that created, creates the need for additional space.
Okay, so I think what you're telling me is you were just all quite new to this luxury boutique hotel business, so I would imagine by the same token, you're pretty new to the affordable housing rental business as well. So you're saying that there's certainly ample room in the farmhouse for all the community rooms, and the recreation room, and the kitchen, and what you have planned there now, there's ample room. Is it at all possible that you may be wrong about that too, since you're really new to that, and you really may need all that room for the tenants?
Well, I think, honestly, I think if the, if the studio apartments weren't moved out into another building, creating a lot more space, we wouldn't be standing here talking today, because right now, there's just a lot of space, and it's frankly more space, in our view, in Napa Valley Community Housing view, than those tenants need, so, or will need, even at 100% occupancy. So we feel with that additional space, you know, it would work out for us to expand with the offices into that, in that area, or, you know, our other option is, you know, we start taking rooms out of service and converting them into offices, which we don't want to do.
So how many studio apartments are there in the, out of the 25 affordable?
Joan, I don't know, do you know the number of studios?
There aren't many studios, there are 17 one-bedrooms, 72 bedrooms, and 13.
Okay. So I want, I do have some changes about, I mean, questions about parking as well. I know that, you know, by our account, for mandatory use, you need so many parking spaces, and you have a parking plan. What do you guys, you know, do internally for parking enforcement to make sure that that actually happens?
Sure. Well, I'll speak to the 10 managers. When we told them they should, you know, park on property, they were elated. That was a benefit, it's a perk for them to be able to park on property, so they love doing that. I mean, it's very convenient, and sometimes they're there late at night, and it's, you know, safer than their view to, you know, just park in the hotel parking lot. So they do, they all do that, all of them. The other employees, we have gone out in a number of ways to tell them where to park specifically. We had a number of conversations with Steve and Sandra on specifically where to park. We give them maps showing them exactly where they should park, which is on the hotel side of the street of Washington, or on the South gravel lot, just south of town, so, and we continuously reinforce this with them, and it's seemingly working out well. Look, I could tell you today, I drove past there, and I saw somebody parked on the other side, I stopped, I told them, you know, you can't park there, they said, okay, sorry, and they moved their car, so...
So how many people park in the gravel lot?
Probably, it depends on the day and the occupancy, but probably upwards to maybe high twenties, thirty, somewhere in there.
Twenty or thirty cars are in the gravel lot?
Yeah, or on the, on Washington Street, on the hotel side of Washington Street.
Well, just the gravel lot, I mean, how many would you say?
Oh, it varies upon day, but, you know, I could...
A range is fine.
Ten.
Okay. And so now you want to make some changes in the farmhouse for these offices that were totally unanticipated. Are there other changes that you guys are talking about in town that you might be coming to talk to us about in the short term, long term? I mean, is this it? Are you all done?
No, you know, these hotels are never done, I suppose, but, you know, we, ultimately, we've had some discussion, brief discussion, on trying to open the bar, our lobby bar to the public, which is not open to the public currently. We would like to look at how we can open the restaurant, we've got a 40-seat restaurant to the public, and we have a spa on property that we'd like to open to the public, much like a lot of other hotels in Yountville are, open to the public. But we do understand that there are problems with doing, moving forward on that because of the parking situation. That's been made very clear, that, you know, we really can't move forward until we resolve some sort of parking issues. So we would like to have that discussion, and, you know, that could involve the improvement somehow of the south part of town, and maybe some sort of a public parking area there that we could participate in to help, you know, solve the parking problem.
So none of these possible activities would require more management?
No.
More offices?
No.
No?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Hall, any questions of the applicant?
I have none at this time.
Vice Mayor? The one question I have, of your 10 or so management employees, how many are on-site at any one time? I'm assuming all 10 are on-site.
Probably seven, you know, because we rotate coverage of the hotel, et cetera, and people work different hours, maybe seven.
But you feel, I think, staff's recommendation was that all 10 parking spots would need to be accounted for, because there are enough times that all 10 may be on-site? Is that a fair statement?
On rare occasion, yeah, but usually, it's less than that, just because of the days off and the sort of thing.
Okay.
And again, you know, we do run 100% occupancy on days, but when there's anything less than that, you know, there are lots of spots available, it's never been an issue since we've, since we implemented it.
Okay, and I think this is the first time a business owner has said that they require their staff to park on their property, which is kind of an interesting dynamic.
They're very happy.
Vice Mayor, you have a question after all?
Well, I guess that made me think of the simple logistics of your, I don't, I don't fully know your parking lot, but, I mean, where are you going to have, or where would you propose, if that was a condition, that you would rope off essentially 10 parking spaces from your guests? I don't know if you have it around the back, or, I mean, it doesn't, it seems odd to me.
We, you know, look, you know, to put signage up, I mean, this is a boutique luxury hotel to put up signs that say employee parking only is, you know, not the best, you know, approach in my mind. You know, it's, the guest doesn't know whether it's an employee car, or, you know, a guest's car, and we prefer to keep it that way. So I don't know, maybe we need to look at some other way of ensuring if that's the concern, that they actually do park there versus somewhere else.
We've got a couple ideas that we would be sharing with the hotel. A simple one is simply marking 10 reserved spaces scattered throughout their parking lot. That way, the reserve, you know, the average person's not going, if it's not reserved, they don't know that. That way, it kind of fits their not wanting to say employee parking, it meets our objective of, okay, where are those spots? Can we track that they're being utilized? Because that's what we're looking for. The property, and I will say, Steve has been very cooperative in working with us on a number of occasions in trying to understand, the lots are scattered, and some of their folks, their guests, don't bring vehicles, so we do feel that we have some parking capacity on property. They have been responsive and shared with us the communications about the employee parking, and unfortunately for Yountville, it adds, as I've explained to Mr. Davino, that part of my full-time job is parking ambassador and enforcer. That's just going to be part of what the town manager's office and planning staff in this community do as it relates to that. But they've taken it seriously, and I do think in this particular case, that, you know, we've also toured the property, they've been very candid with us, not attempting to hide things in the sense of what their space needs are. We've gone through the property, and I think Mr. Davino's correct when he says the other option is converting guest rooms into office, and that has impacts. The challenge that we face is, you know, we don't have available office space to encourage some of the ancillary uses that our businesses need to stay in Yountville, and some of these things just don't make sense for the property to go rent space elsewhere. In some cases, in certain businesses, they do. I don't want to pretend that in some cases they don't, but in some of these, they're adjunct, you know, they're adjunct to it in relocating. So we do think the idea of designating the spaces, and it will probably be scattered, so it's not a cluster, and it doesn't create, and that would be something more, but it would also allow us to be able to manage, and that would be one of the conditions when Sandra talked about, we would need to talk more broadly about some type of management. And as you know, that's been an ongoing, we keep getting a little more involved in parking management with most new applications.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one follow-up question about the management of the affordable units, and the staff's recommendation that this be considered as a condition of use. One thing, as your comment before addressed, is filling those units. It's another thing altogether to continually maintain and manage the behaviors, the comings and goings, the uses of the parking lot, et cetera. So is it your opinion that your internal management team would still be the better of the two options in terms of managing, enforcing all of those units, not just marketing them for occupancy?
Yeah, I'm not exactly familiar the way, with the way Napa Valley Community Housing does it, but, but our, the plan that currently is in place, to me, works, works well for the, for the guests and the people that stay in the apartments. And I think with this, with the strategy that we have, it will, it will work, and the management will work, work well, and it'll be a great place to live for people. The, a little bit of the concern about having, you know, somebody like Napa Valley Community Housing as a, as a condition of, you know, utilizing the space is that this is a business, and it, you know, something like that could potentially encumber the business. So, meaning if someone, you know, if the ownership wanted to sell, and someone wanted to buy it, that wanted to manage it themselves, you know, it's encumbered by the operating or management agreement of someone else. That is something to consider, was something that we discussed, you know, prior to this meeting with the ownership. So, you know, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but that is a consideration we all need to think about. And, but I think, you know, to the point earlier, I think what we're going to do is create success there, and it's going to, the outcome is going to be that we've got a fully occupied apartment complex with people that are happy to live there.
I do want to remind the council, and perhaps the applicant, although they're probably aware of it, we do have an annual reporting requirement that regardless of whether the facility is operated by the owner applicant, or a third party, we still have an annual review, where we go through, look at the leasing, and we have an opportunity to evaluate whether that's working well, and that that's part of our agreement for deed-restricted affordable housing, and that's part of their contract services with the City of Napa Housing Authority. So we will be tracking and monitoring the success, if you will, of the property, and if it's not successful, you'll be hearing about that, as will the applicant.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. One more question, Councilmember Doran Becker?
Please. Can you tell me now, with the additional renters who are coming in, how many of them work for the Hotel Yountville?
We have probably two, I believe, it would be two that actually work, work there, and I'm not sure about the ones that we've, we've got, but I don't think they are employees, but they do, many of them do work in Yountville.
They work in Yountville?
Yes.
A large percentage of them?
I think, I think more than half work now in Yountville.
And then, who will be then designated to be in the Hopper Creek office to administer to the, to the tenants?
That's, would be the apartment manager.
And who's that?
Her name is Betty. Betty actually also operates the Gateway, the mobile park in the back, she also does that.
I see, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
It is a public hearing, so I'll invite members of the public who are here tonight to comment or ask their questions. Ms. Heine, please, you're up, and I have a feeling we might need to lower that microphone just a touch. Thank you.
Don't go away.
Okay.
We don't live in a mobile home park, we live in a manufactured home park.
Okay, fair enough. I stand clear.
Thank you very much. Donna Heine, Gateway Estates. I'm here this evening representing the homeowners and residents of our park, and I want you to know that there has not been one call that has been a concern about the change in the tenancy at the farmhouse. There was, there were a couple of concerns about parking, but in the past, we have not had any infringement on the parking in our park, as opposed to that that surrounds the farmhouse, or those people who are in the inn. There is that back portion, the addition portion, which we, some people were concerned if there was a, if there were people having guests within the inn, that they would not have places to park, but we have not had a problem in that regard at all, and I wouldn't anticipate it, especially with the gravel parking that has been in existence now, just recently, but I've only noticed a maximum of about four or five cars there, maximum, at different times of the day when I have driven past. So I'm speaking in support, and would anticipate that everything has been resolved, or any questions, and that this is a good use of the project under the circumstances, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, and I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak tonight? Seeing no other, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and invite council discussion. Councilmember Mueller, would you like to kick off our discussion on this item?
I'll do that.
And actually, before I let you get started, just as a reminder, the staff report has highlighted kind of a succession of issues, the first being, is the council willing to modify the development agreement as it relates to the use of the farmhouse? If that... If that answer is no, then that kind of cuts off the rest of the items. But if it is yes, then we need to address the specific use and configuration of the farmhouse, parking potential impacts, and the management issue. So, if you could potentially touch on all those, that would be appreciated.
Well, I think my first answer is going to be, not yes or no, but maybe. I think that right now, the most important thing for me, the council in '09 was of the strong belief that they had it right when they said that they didn't want any hotel or guest uses of the farmhouse. And I think to reverse that decision, in my mind, it certainly has to meet a very, a high standard, much more so than some office space to reverse their previous decisions. I think they, you know, gave it a lot of thought, and there was a lot of reasons for that. So, I'm also, you know, just now hearing that there's been, seems to be a very rapid increase just in the last week or so, I suppose, about the rental. So, I'm very anxious to see that this member of our community, you know, in addition to residents and visitors, our businesses are part of our community, and our, all of our community needs to meet their obligations for all of us to benefit. So, you know, I think that I would really like to see Hotel Yountville complete their obligation to finish renting these 25 affordable housing units. I'd like to see how the occupants, I remember these units are fairly small, I'd like to really see how they use that community space, the recreation space, the kitchen and laundry facility in that, because as the applicant said, they didn't really anticipate the need for office space. So, you know, maybe once it really gets fully rental, rented out, let's just really see how the residents really use that space. So, that's why I'm giving you a maybe, because if some of these things are met and they really want to come back and talk about it again, I would definitely be open. I also, they said that there's a lot of other things, you know, possibly coming up, a lobby, a lobby bar, I don't know, maybe you can put office spaces in that if they don't decide to do that, a restaurant, a spa, a lot of parking. I think piecemealing something always makes, you know, you kind of have a death by a thousand cuts, you know, we change this to this and that to that. So, I'd really like to see a comprehensive plan, you know. What do you, what do you think you're really going to do? I mean, if you get a use permit for having a lounge bar, you don't ever have to open it. We don't, you know, we're not going to force that, but we can see what we really, we can see the whole picture. So, that's really what I'd like to see. So, conditionally, if they come back and we can look at all these things, I'd be willing to revisit the office space at that time.
So, could you maybe speak to the management of the spaces, or if you're opposed to the use of the apartments, then I guess there's no point in speaking to the management issue, whether it be internal or Napa Valley Community Housing?
We, as part of the use permit, and we told them that they asked for being able to manage those, and I'm willing to, that seems to be what they want now. So, they can get some rented and stay rented, and the people who are renting them can use the farmhouse and the designated spaces, and we can really see if there's a lot of unused space, you know, so be it. So, that's really what I want to do, is get these things rented as part of their agreement and see how the farmhouse is being used, and look at their whole plan when they come back, because maybe office space isn't really needed there once they really have a thorough look at their whole plan.
So, it's deferring all of this until?
Yeah, I don't want to give them a no, because, you know, then we'd have to reverse a no, and that makes it more complicated. So, not at this time is what I'd like to go with.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall, your comments?
Thank you. Thank you to the applicant for coming today. I do actually, I always forget that my business includes a hotel property, so I need to make a disclosure, and I apologize again for the delinquency of that. But I'm the vice president of finance for the Pottery Inn LLC, which is a boutique hotel on the eastern side of Napa Valley. But my representation or participation in that organization requires I disclose that I'm an employee there, but that I have no financial impact or interest in its organization. So, I believe and feel comfortable in making decisions, or at least communicating on that tonight, and I'll do so. I'm going to agree with Councilmember Mueller in her comment that, you know, sort of struck me at the heart of this whole issue, and that is, you know, we're looking back at what a prior council has already deemed important, and it was the thing I underlined in purple because it was so meaningful to me, and that was that the, you know, the original council wanted to ensure that we restricted the farmhouse to the exclusive use and enjoyment of workforce housing tenants. Now, I understand completely the business has changed. That's the nature of business, and we have to adapt. So, I'm not ruling that what the prior council and what your prior objectives were as a business haven't evolved and that there isn't a new need. But I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that four years or eight years from now, we're going to be back in a different situation where a decision that this council might have made is going to be undermined in that frame. And I don't know necessarily that I can do that as an existing council member without having sat through all the prior litany of communications that the prior council went through, because I think as Councilmember Mueller expressed, there was a lot of thought and review in that. That said, businesses do evolve, and I recognize that at this juncture, although the housing isn't completely staffed, or completely full, pardon me, that you're looking for space for staff, and I would be open to that adjustment. I'm just, I want to be very sensitive to the fact that we're, as a group, if we consider this undermining what prior councils have done, and they, you know, had the foresight to put that in place for a reason, and I want to make sure we're all aware of that, or at least comfortable doing that. So, I guess my first, the first part of this is, I am not unlike Councilmember Mueller open to it if there is, if we can continue to assess and understand what the needs of the workforce housing for the rec area or the space would be. That was the original intent of the project. I don't know if that's being too wishy-washy, but I'm not ready to say yes or no on either at this juncture. That's my first comment. With that, with that though, if the rest of the council or we move forward on the first matter, I would like to at least have my comments for the affordable housing management. I'm open and would fully respect that they want to continue the use, you know, as the use permit allows, and to continue the management of the workforce housing. There's no reason for us to condition that they push it along to someone else. It seems like there is a current increased use, and, I mean, obviously, something's working, and maybe if the strategic model is working on that, then great, let's continue that, and hopefully you'll fill up, and your occupancy is great, because it helps not only yourselves, but also it'll help the entire community. And lastly, on parking, you know, as we've heard from a member of the public, it doesn't seem like there's a tremendous issue at this juncture with it, and it sounds like you're being very gracious, allowing your employees to park on property. So, I would hope that that would continue, but I don't see any other restrictions or adjustments necessary unless there was such that you needed to add five more employees or change that, the existing number of, or what your proposed number is of having people park on site. So, I don't know if I covered all my components at this point.
If not, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Thank you. Unlike my colleagues, I think that despite the fact that the former town council felt that the farmhouse should be only used for the workers who are living there, I actually think that, you know, that the planning to have those studio apartments in there was poor planning, and that wasn't a really good use of the space. And we are so familiar with the lack of office space in the town of Yountville that we are working on, you know, having enticing developers to please build some. So, I can certainly understand. I also believe that in the planned development zoning district, that you do have the flexibility to allow mixed commercial and residential uses in the farmhouse. Also, I am impressed that, because reading through this, I saw the size of the recreation room that was planned originally, and I think it was only 195 square feet. And the Napa, Napa Valley Community Housing submitted a letter of support for the reduced and reconfigured space, and the applicant has increased the size of the recreation room to 408 square feet, which has then been said to be very, you know, significant. So, I don't have a difficulty with imagining making this change, and I would definitely entertain the idea.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I, my thoughts are very similar to Councilwoman Doran Becker's on this one. I think when we talk about the use change, it has to do with, to me, with the public impact, and my greatest concern is the impact on the residents at the affordable housing, but also the residents at Gateway Estates. We've all made that mistake, by the way. Donna has corrected us. So, I don't really see that that, I don't see that this change has a significant or any impact on it. And to me, if I go back and remember some of those discussions, to me, it was about not using that space as hotel rooms, hotel space, in terms of the separation between the two. It's not having people who are transient, even if they're wealthy transients, coming and going out of, out of a space, and always having that change, and people with luggage and service and that kind of thing. That was my view on that. I also think that it is, if we think back on the history of it, usually when people say that they did not anticipate an intensity of use, I usually think that they're not telling the truth, and I think in this case you are. And the reason I think of that is, when most people come in here, it is to their advantage to downplay how many employees, and we don't need that much parking, and we're going to open this small retail space, and the tasting rooms aren't going to have two people ever, which we all know not to be true. When this hotel was originally designed, and I remember your design team who kind of came through during construction, I don't remember their name, the Millican Creek folks, they said, boy, I wish I had been here before we actually did design, because they said, this is not the way I would have designed it. We're trying to do a luxury hotel, and, you know, it wasn't designed for that originally. So, I think in this case, I do believe that the heightened use, and it's been, it's been obviously good for the hotel, I think it's been better than I would have expected. I don't know if it's better than you all expected, but you'll say no at this point. I think that has been good, you know, the room rates are up, occupancy's up, that's good for the town, and it's good for you guys, and I think this is logical and it makes sense. So, I'm okay with it. And I don't think we're, you know, I don't think we're going back and doing something that's a major shift in what former councils were thinking. I do think the parking reserve space, when you talk about how that would work, it makes sense to me. It has to do with the management piece of it, of feeling comfortable that, yes, those spaces are being used for the way we think they are. My impression is, when you say there's 81 parking spaces, that's after reserving the 10. Okay, so there's 91 spaces there now. And ironically, I have a feeling that maybe even the upscaling of the hotel means even less cars are there, because people can probably afford to have somebody drive them around. I also do not think that, at this point, that there's a need for us to dictate who your management company is. I like Napa Valley Community Housing, but it's, you're a private business, I wouldn't want somebody telling me how to run part of my private business. There is obviously a public interest in having those rented, so, and I think you guys have an interest in that as well. So, down the road, if your optimism is misplaced, or this is a one-time thing, we'll drag you over here again and say what's going on. So, that's what I, that's how I see that issue. So, I'm fine with the use change. Based on what I've heard, I think we should have the restriction on the reserved parking, and I do not think the Napa Valley Community Housing restriction needs to be in there. Is that clear enough?
It is.
Thank you.
Almost don't need a vote after your comment. What I will say is, the two keys for me were, are parking impacts and any loss of affordable units. We're not seeing, and that's why I wanted to confirm with staff, we're not seeing a need for increased parking due to increased staff beyond what your property already contains, and you're not eliminating affordable units. That was going to be a deal breaker for me, because we can't afford to lose any affordable units in this town. We don't have that many, even though we've done a great job. What I do want to remind everybody is also, you built these units. You control more than many of our other property owners how to rent them and how to manage them. So, I will give you some of that leeway there as well. I'm kind of going backwards here, but I don't feel the need to change what is currently a functioning management process, but we certainly reserve the right that if that changes and starts to fail, we can look elsewhere to make things improve. But I don't see there being a problem that we need to fix. That's the authority that I think that we have in place. If you were mismanaging those units, then I'd feel differently. Also, I think that the Napa Valley Community Housing letter of support carries a lot of weight with me about, I don't, I'm not an expert on how much square footage do apartment dwellers really need to have some level of recreational opportunity. They are the experts, in my opinion. They're a neutral expert, so they're not invested in how this decision is made. So, I take their support very seriously, as do I take the support from the Gateway Estates. And as much as, as Heine would like to speak for all the residents of Gateway Estates, I know that that's not exactly true, but the fact that the town has not received, whether it be through Gateway Management or directly with the town staff, major issues with the property management, that also allays any fears that I have. I do think that this is a natural evolution of this property. It's a very positive direction that the property has gone, and I understand, we've dealt with it with other commercial businesses in town. When they're successful, when they want to upgrade, there are impacts to that. As Vice Mayor said, there are times that we can tell the genuineness or lack of genuine comments that we receive about what their intents are. But I feel like, as we've seen this evolve in the property rent debate, that this is exactly the direction I was hoping for, frankly. I remember being on the council when this originally was decided, the principal concern with many of us was preserving the farmhouse integrity. The greatest debate was about how much historical status does that farmhouse contain, and frankly, senior management office use versus rent or recreational use, to me, is minimizing the impact potentially on that, on that facility. And as we've talked about, the town is pretty lean when it comes to office space, and we need to recognize that that deficiency needs to be addressed sometimes in a creative way. So, I think generally, I touched on all the items here, we'll formalize it with a vote, but I can support the change to the development agreement as long as we don't see a parking impact that then starts to really filter out and impact the community. Same goes for the management of the apartment units, that we preserve those units. I certainly don't want to see anybody, any manager or any other staff, using a hotel room or an affordable housing rental unit as an office. That's, that's just wrong. You shouldn't have to do it. You shouldn't do it because it's not permitted. But we also need to find a way that we can resolve that situation. So, those are my comments. I think we've heard from everyone, so if there is a motion to be had, I would accept one at this time. Is anyone prepared to make a motion as it relates to this particular application? So, we're talking about?
We're making a motion, Derek Staff?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And the, the direction would be if, now, Senator, do you require multiple votes, that if we approve the first part of this being the use of the farmhouse, if that is a negative, then we stop there? If it's a positive, we continue? Or is it one, depending on the motion, one, all-inclusive?
I think it's, depending on the motion, it could be a single motion.
Okay.
If you're leaning in terms of approving the project, it could all be incorporated.
So, for example, if, if we take staff's recommendation as that motion, that would incorporate all the elements that you've presented. But you have left the one issue of the affordable unit management as discretionary, according to your recommendation.
I would say that included, as part of your motion, suggests which conditions should attach to the project.
So, is there such a motion to be had? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I will give it a try. I move that we approve the master plan, master development plan amendment, including the use permit amendment and the development agreement amendment, to allow a portion of the Hopper Creek Apartments' farmhouse to be used for office space by Hotel Yountville. And that the conditions, I have, I don't see any conditions personally. But that would be my-
You can make that motion, so that your motion does not require any change of the existing management. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. So, we'll go to a vote. I guess we should do a real call vote, just to be safe here.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Moller?
No.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. So, by a 3-2 vote, that is approved, as the application is presented?
It's, it's actually direction.
A direction.
Staff is not approving the application.
So, we, you bring back a resolution in future, and that would be, are dates certain on that at the next meeting?
I do want to clarify, there will be some typical standard conditions, as we always have and stuff like that, because, for example, this may, depending on when the dates changed, this may trigger our standard policy of the conditional use permit monitoring fee and a few other things like that, that are policy direction of the council.
Fair enough.
So, staff will work on the resolution enacting the changes based on your feedback.
And it'll be brought back at a future, future date.
Two weeks.
All right. Is that all the direction you need? Great, thank you very much. Thanks for that staff report. Thanks for everyone's comments, and we will look for that resolution in the future. I have a feeling we're about to lose all of our audience. You're welcome. You're welcome to stay.
Put it there. Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 10, Administrative and Regular Items. The first one being Townwide Annual Cleanup Day. Can we start off with the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Briefly, this is a follow-up to something that the council and staff have been discussing for approximately eight months. As you may recall, we had a more extensive discussion about alternatives in December. And at that point in time, direction was given to staff and also to the council's voting delegate to Upper Valley Waste Management Authority to pursue some different alternatives and to provide informational feedback as to ways to possibly cover the cost of the community cleanup. And at that point in time, council provided direction to, that the town would cover the funding gap for this current cleanup that was just recently conducted. During budget preliminary discussions, the council provided no firm direction on proceeding in the future. And I say that in the sense that there was mixed feedback from the council as to how to, looking forward, were we going to potentially fund? And to more, more simplistic, whose job really was it to pay for the community cleanup? Because in, in principle, it's actually an event funded and paid for historically by the ratepayers of Upper Valley Waste Management. So, at that point in time, the consensus feedback was to allow for some additional information gathering on the part of Upper Valley Waste Management. They issued a postcard survey that was sent to residents of their customers, ratepayers. They asked a specific question about Yountville, which was, was there an interest in paying a surcharge of between $6 and $10 to pay for the service? And, a 12 hours, excuse me. And then in the Upper Valley communities, there was a question about a surcharge for household hazardous waste events. Fast forward, survey results are in, which had over 220 respondents, which is actually a very significant response rate in this community. And overwhelming majority indicated a willingness to pay a surcharge. Not necessarily all on the same amount, but somewhere between the $6 and the $10, $12, excuse me. The town of Yountville does not provide the service, nor do we hold the franchise for the garbage collection. That's administered by Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, and the service is provided by Upper Valley Disposal. The Upper Valley Waste Management Authority is a joint powers authority of which the town has one voting representative. That body actually establishes all the rates and charges and manages the franchise for garbage collection. Councilmember Moller serves as the town's representative to that body. At this point, based on the council's feedback, the direction was given that if there was resident ratepayer interest, that the council might want to send its recommendation via our council representative. And we have been suggesting that this, a formal resolution would add a little bit more substance, and that this would provide direction to the representatives of Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, that the council supports moving forward with a surcharge. I'll let Councilmember Moller comment a little bit more. But in terms of your alternatives, you have the opportunity to approve the resolution authorizing that, modifying it, or not approving it, which basically sends no formal message of support to Upper Valley Waste as to what direction the towns express.
And actually, before we hear from Councilmember Moller, I just want to make it perfectly clear to the audience that any action we take is no guarantee of any surcharge. We are simply providing direction through our representative to the body that does make that decision.
That is correct. You would be sending a endorsement, or what would be viewed as support for this approach, should they choose ultimately to do so.
Right.
And authorizing your designee, in this case, Councilmember Moller, to represent that direction. So, rather than it just being an individual vote of the representative, you actually would have a full policy document that would be certified and sent.
Great. Then we're going to hear from Councilmember Moller.
I just wanted to add a little more detail. When these, this issue, we've been talking about, everyone knows, for quite a while, how to resolve it. So, that was, you know, my thought, let's just ask the people what they think. So, we sent the, the cards out to everybody, and actually, everybody, all the other board members on the JPA for Upper Waste Management were quite impressed with the, the totals that came back from Yountville. That was, I think, highlighted in the staff report, that, you know, when you send out surveys, you get about 7% of the people responding, and we're well over, you know, we're close to 30%, considering all the, the individual customers we have. So, I think people in Yountville like to have their opinions heard. So, with that, it's, you can slice up the numbers several different ways. If we just look at the, the preponderance at $6 and $10 for their willingness to do a survey, that's 55%. I think it's also interesting to note, if you just look at the number of respondents who are willing to pay either $6, $10, or $12, it's over 71% of the community. So, granted, there's 16% that did not want to pay at all, and I think you, we included all the notes. A lot of people wrote notes on, on their card. We even got some, there was even some comments from people in St. Helena that they want a cleanup day. So, I think the notes are very interesting, what, what people wrote. And then also, what we're considering tonight is a surcharge that would be up to $10, but almost 15 and a half percent of the people would even pay more than that. So, just, that's how the, the numbers kind of came out from the, the survey card. So, I think it's, it was good that everyone responded, so we really had some direction of how people in Yountville felt about the cleanup day.
Questions? And I've got a couple that I'll let the council ask. Councilmember Hall?
Okay. I'm not exactly sure where to direct my questions, so should I just put them out there to the ether and let everybody chime in?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, obviously, this is a benefit to the town, it's going to be borne by the ratepayer, that all makes sense. Do we know, I mean, I know there's rough numbers in here about what it costs, but, so we're going to basically, as a council, what we would be doing would be submitting a, we think this is a good idea to have a surcharge for a townwide cleanup. That's basically what we're committing. We're going to communicate here. Is that correct?
Well, in, in the resolution right now, we do have that it would be up to $10. So, there's a lot of other details to work out, because there's approximately 800 accounts, trash accounts, some are businesses, close to 700 are probably residents, and so that would have to be worked out, who's charged, who can participate. Prop 26 says, you know, we, nobody can give away service to people who aren't paying, so we've talked about that quite a bit at the board, because Upper Waste Management used to, for example, pick up a lot of trash at schools, or the Napa Valley Wine Auction Event, but it's not, based on the passage of Prop 26, it's not fair to charge a ratepayer for something the company is giving away that they may or may not agree with. So, that will all be worked out. So, what we're really approving now is up to $10 as a surcharge.
Right.
Whether that would be on your bill once, out of the four bills you get a year, or divided over that, that all needs to be worked out right now, so.
And I'll add another bit of information, based on current company charges. See, that's the other interesting thing, is the company reimburses themselves with their credit, and the rates that are charged for the event are actually also dictated by ultimately the annual action of the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority in terms of their rate and rate recovery. The event has averaged in the $7,000 to $8,000 cost, based on the reimbursement rate to Upper Valley Disposal, and that's roughly what they had told us when we approved the fact that we may need to pay. And I will tell you, you know, we had an approximately $6,000 credit remaining, and I just got an invoice today for $2,539, so that would tell me the event this year cost a little over $9,000.
Well, they said at the last board meeting, they expected it to be about $6,500 based on the tonnage that they picked up. So, we'll have to sort that out.
Might have to do with the fact that there was, wasn't there a balance in the account?
It's right. We have, there was a small balance.
That might be the $3,000 difference.
That's what they were reporting.
Yeah. And I just, I may be off right in front of me with the balance.
Well, the staff report says $3,700 was in balance, so that would be your, that would be your difference.
Then we're very close, that would be correct. And I was off on my initial number, so that would put us at about $6,500, so I would say that that is the correct amount.
So, so then my, you know, my only other questions about this are, I mean, we're going to basically, as the council, say, "We'd like to have this effect, and we think our residents like that," or at least 55% have said something, whether it was yes, no, or otherwise. The other 45% would have this foisted upon them if it was approved. At our, we're, you know, cheering them on. And then my question becomes with, any cash in excess or deficit that they collect for this activity, after said activity is, you know, valued, and you get your invoice, I mean, what happens with the money? A, that there is deficit on, does it go back to the ratepayer? Or B, if there's a excess amount, are they going to hold it on their books as a future asset that we should have an attribution? And does that reduce my rate the following year? I, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, but I know who we're dealing with, and I know their books are-
I think you bring up some, some very good options in terms of looking at it. If you look at it as a rolling fund, you know, because, then that would. So, if you have an excess, then that would build up and offset. But those are some technical details that really are up to the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, and, you know, certainly, Councilmember Moller can share some of those ideas from the council on feedback. You know, our expectation is that, you know, we do need a detailed accounting, and we're not just going to give them the, the money without an expectation for the return on it. We also believe, from our standpoint, that, you know, I don't want them to send the town a check, and then us to get billed for it and send them money back. I, I don't find that appropriate at all, because they're the ones that control what the cost of the, in service delivery. The town wants to continue a successful partnership for the event, where our efforts will include the marketing and promotion, but that, you know, I'm fully anticipating that the board should determine the rate surcharge, review it, and make the necessary up and down adjustments on the surcharge on an annual basis, as they set their annual rates, which is their responsibility. That's, that's what that board does every year, is look at what the costs are. So, you know.
And, and I, and I agree with that. I would just ask that, you know, if we're going to stamp something with our approval, and we're going to take quasi fiduciary responsibility for them charging the ratepayers here because of 55% response, again, we're just saying, "This is what we'd like to do." But let's, let's, if we can, please make sure there's some transparency, and maybe, maybe we'll get some? That's all I would ask or comment on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Moller, did you have anything else to report, or shall we take additional comments from council?
Um, no, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that there was over 71% of the people that actually said they'd pay something. So, the information we have in here is that 55% would be in that $6 to $10 range. Just, just so everyone knows, that there was definitely a preponderance of people who'd be willing to pay for the service.
Okay.
And you could crunch those numbers a few different ways, because 192 people checked one of those boxes for what they would pay, but 220 people responded. So, there's, there's some margin of error in there.
Great. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, um, first of all, 55% of 220 people is not the same as 55% of the town, and 71% of, 71% of the 200 and some people who responded is still not the biggest percentage of the town population who subscribe. But I'll just cut to the chase. I think that from 2005 to 2007, the town of Yountville picked up the cost for this event. It's a very popular event. I think our residents deserve it, and I think that we should do it. I think that a $10 fee is, what's the difference between a $10 fee and a $10 tax? And I think that our population deserves it, they put up with a lot, they come out and help at a lot of events, they're very, they give a lot to the town, and I, this is something, since they like this event, I don't think it takes a lot of marketing on our part to make it a popular event. It is popular. And personally, I feel that we should do this out of our general fund, we can afford to do it, whereas in 2005, 2006, and 2007, I have a feeling that we were not quite doing so well financially. But now we are, and for as long as we can, I would like to see us do this for our residents. And when we consider the budget, and we've been talking a lot about the budget, and we think, "Oh, well, we don't want to rent a manufactured vehicle to put in the, you know, for staff to move into, to have their temporary offices, we could just spend another $100,000 and buy one." Then, the, you know, that, when you look at the perspective between $8,000 and that, I really feel that the residents deserve this, we should take it out of the general fund, and we should pay for it each year. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
You know, one of my big concerns about this is, the last time around, and it's people who aren't ratepayers who are using it. And I know we talk about- And I know we talk about, you know, having them only go through and, um, pick up from houses, I suppose, that are, that are, um, ratepayers that actually have service. But then I think we get in the situation of, do you have somebody who goes and throws trash in the middle of the night in their, their neighbor's yard? So, I, my bigger concern right now has to do with the fact that we, we've talked about this a little bit. I know Steve has brought this up, that we don't have a requirement that people have to have trash service. And part of me says, you know, should we get into that business of acquiring that? But when you talk about basic health and public safety, if you've got a house, you're going to generate trash. And either you're dumping it in some business's dumper on the side of the road, or you're accumulating it all somewhere, and you're going to bring it out on this day. So, I am concerned about that, and I think that's something that we should address. I, I, I have to agree with Councilmember Moller on it. Uh, Moller, I'm sorry. I looked at you. Dornbecker, on what you said. I generally think that this is a very, you know, we used to subsidize water to $300,000 per year. I think $6,000 is probably okay, at least for now.
Thank you. My comments are basically two points. One, I see it would be appropriate for a different surcharge for commercial versus residential. I don't see the, I don't know exactly how much commercial activity there is on cleanup day, but there, there has to be some. So, but I also have heard from talking with residents about some of the residential, I'm assuming ratepayers, but don't know that for a fact, that basically wait until their home renovation is finished and throw all of their refuse on the curb, knowing that this is coming. Our intent is to provide a benefit, but what I want to remind everyone is the comments that Councilmember Dornbecker made. The general consensus, in my opinion, was the rate, the residents didn't realize that we weren't paying for it in those years you were just citing. We were not taking general fund money and paying for the service. It was being paid for by the ratepayers. It was being paid for through a program that the Upper Valley Disposal had in place. They were charging the ratepayers to pay for the service. We're basically saying the same thing. It's just that we are recommending that they restart that process. So, it's not as if we're cutting off the money and saying, we're no longer paying for this service, and now you have to pay for it yourself. We never paid for it.
Right.
Until this last two years, a year?
Year.
When this fund ran out. That's the difference I see. The fact that the residents didn't realize the town wasn't paying for it is beside the point. The fact was, I've heard folks tell me, no, they don't want the general fund money to go toward this cleanup day. They don't use it. They don't need it. I know, I drove around town, like I'm sure everybody else did. I'd see some folks with one rug out there. Could they get rid of that another way? Of course they could. And I also look at $10 annually is a very reasonable surcharge, especially given some of the savings that people are benefiting from by this service. So, I think it's very important that we make that clear. The town, if we make this recommendation, is not trying to pass off a cost from the town to the individual ratepayers. That's the way it was operating in the first place. So, I would recommend that we take this proposal as it's presented and make that recommendation. We still don't even know if the governing body is going to approve that. But as I think Councilmember Moller stated, other municipalities are interested because they're, they are seeing that there is a residential interest and benefit received. But I think it's critical that we're clear on who's been paying for this and who we're talking about paying for it in the future. So, Councilmember Dornbecker.
I have a question, then. In the background and discussion from the town manager and Councilmember Moller to us, it talks about in 1995, in 1995, as part of the new Upper Valley Waste Management Joint Powers Agency, and it talks about they, they gave a ratepayer subsidized grant of $50,000 to use for local services. The town of Yanville opted to use that grant to offset the cost of the community cleanup. In May of 2004, the $50,000 grant was exhausted, and for the next three years, I beg your pardon, Mayor, the town did pay for it.
So, which is accurate? Because I remember when we talked about this in our budget hearings, it was the fund that was generated by...
Both statements are actually accurate because what, what there was is the initial ratepayer funded $50,000, paid for that. And then, prior to my arrival, there was a period of time where that grant had expired. The town paid. Then there was a new franchise grant of $25,000, and then that grant paid for it. But I will also point out that this particular service has changed over the time. Some of the, the original service program actually was not a curbside Cadillac pickup. It was two events with a centralized debris box, and residents had to bring the item to the debris box. So, I think everybody needs to realize that in the history of this particular program, it's changed. But the principle, what I would say, the vast majority of the years were paid by the ratepayers.
So, is there additional discussion on this item? Or is there an action to be voted on? I, I see no members of the public, or else I would invite comment from the public. So, we have a resolution presented to us by staff that would provide direction to make this recommendation of a surcharge up to $10 per ratepayer. Is there a proposal for action?
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 3027-12, providing direction to town representative to Upper Valley Waste Management Authority related to including an annual fee to fund Upper Valley Disposal's cost to provide an annual cleanup day event in Yanville.
Second.
Any further discussion? Is there, okay. There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
So, that would be a 3 to 2 vote with Councilmembers Moller and Hall and the mayor in the affirmative. So, that resolution is passed for recommendation to be taken by our representative, Councilmember Moller, to Upper Valley Waste Management.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Item 10B, Napa, Napa County Draft Subregion Regional Housing Needs Allocation, also known as RENA methodology. Consideration for endorsing the proposed methodology under a minute order action. Staff report, please.
Thank you. What I have for you tonight is a presentation that was actually prepared by NCTPA. And this is being shown to all jurisdictions in the Napa subregion. And at the end of this, I'll be requesting your endorsement of the draft methodology. This draft methodology is recommended by the technical advisory body to the Napa subregion. And also happens to be consistent with ABAG's methodology. So, I'll go through these pretty quick because you should be familiar, or may be familiar with some of these terms already. And what's RENA? It's a state mandated process to determine how many housing units of all types each community must plan and zone for in its general plan housing elements. And at the, at the end of all of this subrena, we will be going into a new housing element adoption. And that must be done by October of 2014. The RENA process is a process where HCD determines the, with input from regional agencies, determines the amount of future housing needed for all income groups in the entire region. This is determined by household growth, which is the natural births, deaths, migration, inmigration, household formation rates. And then, that number is given to ABAG, who they determine a equitable process for meeting the state requirements and distributing the, the housing numbers for each income group throughout the region. We have formed a subregion here in Napa, and the, the law allows two or more cities and a county to form a subregion. In our case, all of the cities in our town and the county have formed a subregion. It provides for a local voice, a unified voice to deal with ABAG and their numbers that they're giving to us. And we've gone through a few iterations with ABAG and corrected some of their numbers. The Napa subregion will get a countywide and jurisdiction total numbers from the region, but has more flexibility in allocating that need among its jurisdictions. And it also allows for swaps and trades between willing members of the subregion. The RENA effort is tied to the Sustainable Community Strategy. It's, this is a state mandated land use plan. It's part of the regional transportation plan. It identifies locations and transportation network to handle the forecasted growth with specific housing employment and environmental goals. Generally, it coordinates land use and transportation planning and provides for housing development to maximize use of existing transportation and transportation infrastructure. And it also with a goal of reducing future energy use and emissions. There's a requirement that RENA has to be consistent with the development patterns included in the Sustainable Community Strategy. I know you can't see this map, but this is a map of the entire...
I can see the bay.
Entire nine county region around the bay and all members of ABAG. And what you, the takeaway here is these, these blobs that you see are what are called priority development areas. And the idea is, these are areas that have transportation opportunities available to them, are, and are also in more urbanized regions. And this is, the, the plan is to generally locate the development in these PDAs. You'll notice up here in Napa County, we are the most rural of all nine counties. We have one PDA down in American Canyon, and then, and the city of Napa has, has applied for same status. They have two PDA-like places that I described in the staff report along Soskal Corridor and in downtown. The state requirements, allocation process must meet four objectives, increase the supply and mix, infill equity and environment, promote infill development, socioeconomic equity, protection of environmental agricultural resources, and efficient development patterns. And that, what moves the development out for the most part of Napa County, as we have a lot of ag here. Improves the jobs-housing relationship and improve income distribution. They have this rule that they will be balancing income distribution throughout the region. If one jurisdiction has a higher representation of an income type, then they will receive less of that category. By income type, I mean they, they've divided the housing into income targets of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, which is market. And you may be familiar with those terms from the housing element. These are some factors that go into the determination of RENA. I won't go over all of them. It's jobs and growth, infill, community character is one of them. It's a big one for us. And then, our subregion formation has been very successful in dealing with both getting the word out to the public and having public meetings, and also in dealing with one, having one voice with ABAG. These priority factors are from a public meeting. They were ranked by the public as being very important and considering when allocating So, the draft method is to use the ABAG draft methodology as the baseline and allow for adjustments within the jurisdictions, as I noted. These adjustments can be made to correct technical errors or better address local priority factors. But here's the big one, is that 70% of future housing growth in the region will be directed to the PDAs. And they, of course, these are American Canyon, City of Napa. 30% of the future growth is outside of PDAs and will be distributed to cities such as Yan, or towns such as Yanville and the other cities in the valley. Should note that, for your information, Napa County, there's a category called priority conservation areas, and we have several of those in Napa County because of our rural The growth, again, is directed away from the agricultural and open space areas. And determining the 30% to the other jurisdictions, they have some rules that, what's called the minimum housing floor, which is a 40% factor minimum that you, each jurisdiction must take on, which is their household formation number. But other fair share factors and adjustments, I should say, are past performance in building low-income housing, which Yanville has done very well at, jobs, job growth, and transit frequency and, and coverage. These are the latest round of numbers that we've received. Our entire region has a little over 1,500 housing units that must be absorbed in our subregion. Yanville has a total of 17, which is quite a reduction from the 87 we had in the last housing cycle, which is shown on this chart, where the 87 was the last, and we're, and that was the '07 to 2014. And the next cycle takes us from 2014 to 2022. So, the next steps, this presentation is being made to all jurisdictions. July 18th, we'll, subregion will adopt the final methodology and issue the draft allocations. Somewhere out, leading up through September, local jurisdiction can request revisions to the subregion. October 2012, the subregion responds to requests for revisions if necessary. In December, the subregion adopts these final allocations and holds public hearings. February is our last opportunity, our, to, to exit the, the subregion. I thought that was January, actually. That is January 2013. The deadline for the subregion to commit final allocation to ABAG, I guess, our subregion will be going to ABAG in February. And then, October is when, of 2014, is when we must adopt the housing element. So, that is the proposal. It's compatible with the Sustainable Community Strategy, and it also, being compatible with ABAG's methodology, ABAG has already built in all the necessary rationales as to how the approach and the methodology complies with state requirements.
Just to add a few other things, the technical advisory group, the planning staff that's been working... been working on this jointly has done a really, really good job. It's been a challenging event. Also, the managers group as sort of an advisory body. This is a very favorable outcome for all of Napa County and a very favorable outcome for Yountville. So we feel good recommending that the council endorse this. And I think it's a testament to the fact that our area does have some unique elements. I will point out though, that there are some folks that take exception. We still have a jobs imbalance. We still have more people working in this county than we have housing. So when we talk about this, there's some folks out there that say, you know, there's some people that still need housing. But I think from where we're looking at it, as Bob pointed out, it really does change a lot to the intensification along the urban corridor rather than accelerating growth in a more rural areas. And it's been an interesting process as staff has worked on this at a number of levels. And NCTPA staff has been very, very helpful and I think very effective in this particular arena.
And I'll also continue that thought because I do sit as a member of the subrena review board. And we are very appreciative of these results. That's definitely the consensus of that board in addition to the technical working group. There is a real concern that if we don't adopt this methodology, we basically just put a target on us about being challenged for how we then create a new methodology that doesn't have the support of ABAG, that doesn't have the support of anybody potentially depending on what we were to choose as an alternative. The consensus from all staff that we've dealt with is we will not in any way do better. We could do worse. We could do the same, but likely not as well as these outcomes. Also, just specifically as I was representing our Yountville interest, the first fair share factor that was mentioned was, was important to me, past performance in actual building lower income housing. We've had a very strong record in that. And it was important, in my opinion, that we be recognized for that. Where others will just say, oh, you never have to build these things. You just have to have them on the books as build a bowl. Well, that's fine, but that's not really serving the community the way we're supposed to be. So we have that as a consideration. Also, this is an impact on new jobs and growth. A concern we have is the veterans home and the changes in employment up there, whether it's reducing or expanding residential units, expanding or changing in some way. So we need to continue to monitor that. The other thing that I consider very important is the ability to trade within the subregion. If we end up having a challenge, even though we're only talking about 17 units now, there is the ability to negotiate that with our neighbors in the county. So I think this is, as Steve just pointed out and as Bob mentioned in the report, a really strong methodology and outcome for us so far. Now, things can always change, but at least it changed in the good direction for us. So with that, since I've heard this information numerous times and you all haven't, questions of staff? Councilmember Mueller?
I have a couple of questions. To Mayor Dunbar's point that there was a delta factor applied if you're actually building, what was that? Was it a good one or just how did they factor that in?
I don't know the specifics of how that changed the stat, but it was a factor under consideration.
Okay, then my other question. So in the future, in 2014, that's when 70% will be assigned to the PDA, is that correct?
By this methodology of our subregion.
So it's after these numbers, which is, the new numbers will be in 2014, right?
Yes, and that, if you, that's reflected in these numbers and the distribution. They're going to Napa and American Canyon essentially. They, American Canyon almost sticks on 400 and getting up towards 900 in Napa.
Well, then, that's, I was just doing a quick calculation. It seemed like if then Calistoga, San Alina, and the unincorporated were getting the other 30%, I come up with 17%. So I'm wondering, is it going to go up to 30% in 2014? I'm just trying to see how that, the PDA factor relates to this, but relating to something in the future or these numbers?
But I don't think those 70 and 30 are strict.
Okay.
That they're minimums and that, at least for the 70. And there is one rule, the 110% rule for the PDAs, that they don't, if their household, they're taking on that percentage of their household formation, they don't have to take in anymore. But other than that, we're free to, within the region, and this is how everyone has, in our subregion, has been satisfied with these numbers.
Okay. So they're just general rules and 70% minimum? That makes sense then. Okay, the numbers fit with that. Thanks.
Ms. Becker?
I do, and I don't know whether you'd be able to answer this question, but I toured the affordable housing units at Hotel Yountville. Who sets the rental amounts for those, do you know?
Well, it's based on a formula. There are some of the units are, in that case, that was a really good outcome in that they were all very low or low. There were no moderate income units. In our housing element, we distribute them on a project normally evenly through the three categories. And those three categories are based against the county median income, where up to 50% is very low, 50 to 80 is low, and then 80 to 100 and 20% is considered moderate. And those are percentages of the county median. So within each one of those groups, they're not, the renter is not expected to pay more than 30% of their annual income for housing.
But didn't, sorry, didn't the council negotiate the breakdown with the property owner when we were approving that development agreement, the breakdown?
The development agreement locked in and they actually came to us voluntarily with very low and low units only in that case, over at the Bardessano project.
No, no, I was, I'm sorry, I meant the Hotel Yountville.
Hotel Yountville.
Hotel Yountville?
Excuse me, Hotel Yountville. In that case, it was eight, eight, and nine, the distribution, which was eight very low, eight low, and nine moderate units. And because they funded the construction, they were also allowed, I believe it's 13, reserved for their employees if they optioned to do that. But the housing, the rental, monthly rental is tied into the county median and their ability to pay 30% of their annual income for housing.
And so that's what they have to report on?
They have to qualify on that.
They have to qualify on that, but then the manager of that housing unit, which would be then the Hotel Yountville, is responsible for it. That's something that they have to report on?
Well, they're administered through the housing authority and they qualify the renters.
Okay.
Yes.
That's just what I, that's what's my question. And then I also wanted to know, is there any interest in pulling out of the subrena? Subregion?
Not for Yountville.
No. And I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction.
I see. But, and so if you, if a, if the town of Yountville did pull out of the subregion in January of 2013, that would affect so many different things.
We'll get our number from ABAG.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall, did you have a question?
I just have, I think they're pretty straightforward. So does this mean then that by 2022, so 10 years from now, we need to have developed an additional 17 properties? Low, let me restate that. Well, let me ask, I'll say it as it is. Is that, or that we have to have the ability to develop?
We have to, in our housing element and planning land use element, have planned for that to happen. And then the market makes it happen generally.
Fair enough. That answers my question.
So that would continue, that these are not required to actually have been constructed, but shown in that element?
Thank you.
One thing I'll point out that is significant for us where we're at right now with our land supply is one of the biggest tools we have is inclusionary housing in order to have these units constructed. Inclusionary housing does not get triggered until you have a subdivision of five or more lots. We don't have that kind of property, much of it. There is some, but we don't have much that's going to be five or more parcels to where we can, we can invoke the, and require inclusionary units.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? So staff is asking that we endorse this methodology and we'd be taking a minute order action because I believe just based on the deadline of needing to endorse this. So is there a motion to endorse this methodology or question, Vice Mayor?
I'll just make a comment that I strongly endorse this. I think considering where we've been in the past and where this has gotten us today, this has worked better than we could have ever hoped for, so.
Second?
I certainly support the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks very much for that report. Staff informational reports, anything that you wanted to bring to our attention? All right, we'll move on to council meeting reports. I'll start with Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. I attended today. The budget hearing for fiscal 2012-13 was opened and we were given the basics and the hearing was continued into our next meeting of June 19th. Also, just issues of interest that came up today, they are calling it the semifinal designs of the bypass plan. This is such a long-term ongoing process and we have so many meetings that you see such a small incremental change. The construction work is going, you know, big time, but the impacts on a countywide basis are quite minimal. The other point I wrote down in my notes was June 1st, they did receive in-water construction permit. So additional work is happening just all over the place down there, to use a technical term. Moving on from that, we have not met in open session with the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. We have only met in closed sessions since our last council meeting here, so that will be a future item. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, is there anything additional that, what we haven't already discussed tonight? Councilmember Mueller?
Back to NCTPA, I think there was some open session where we, after the second to the last, closed session.
Feel free to report on it. I can't remember if it was reported on our last council meeting or not.
Yeah, this one, so there was a public hearing on the Vine transit routes and also one on the discontinuation of the Vine 20 route. And there was an adoption at that meeting too of the countywide bicycle plan, which we put in our consent calendar and also approved tonight. And the other open item, there's a grant that the NCTPA is applying for, for funds to get a new bus service linking Napa, Susan City, and Fairfield.
I feel like we did report on it before, but it's better to report twice than not at all, so.
Okay.
Just in case. Thank you for that. Any other committee reports? Or I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller still?
Then the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, when we met last, we discussed, as we talked about tonight, all the survey results that went out. And the primary goal that Calistoga had was to try to get their residents to buy into hazardous household waste collection event. And they didn't get, they all wanted to do it, but no one wanted to pay to have it done. So for discussion, we decided that if we increased the dump fees up at Clover Flats by a dollar, it would provide enough funding for all jurisdictions to have hazardous household waste cleanup events. And so it'll be rotating to the four different jurisdictions once every four years. And that's how that'll be paid for by the dump fees increasing. So the first event's going to be in Calistoga this fall and I will be your advocate for getting one down here as soon as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall, you have Napa?
Youth and gang violence, yes. I respectfully admit that I forgot the date that it occurred. It was back, I believe, May 21st, if the, yeah, I think it's May 21st if my memory serves me correctly. It was in American Canyon, well-attended. Obviously, there was a lot of public safety officials in attendance, which always makes me feel safe. But they're still looking for new applicants at large from the community. Specifically, they're looking for a faith-based applicant. So I put that out there to the, to the community watching here tonight. It's, it's been almost a year since that committee has come into formation. And I think they're still sort of learning their way with regards to what their larger sort of plan and encompassing objectives are going to be. And so there's a lot of development of select committees that will be doing additional outreach and community sort of development, if you will, for this. But it is very well-attended by a lot of public and private organizations. And not that, not that I would discourage anyone from going. The meetings are long, but there's always, there's always active public participation. And I would ask that perhaps, although we don't necessarily fall on the radar for that organization because they tend to schedule their meetings to the other municipalities, perhaps we could have one of their meetings here if we could rotate it in. So I would ask staff to assist me with coordinating that with Addie Harold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Lafco report?
I do want to congratulate Councilman Hall. He only took you two meetings to eradicate gangs from American Canyon. That's what I read in the paper.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Thanks.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself. Lafco met yesterday and probably the most interesting issue had to do with the owner of the manufactured home park at Capel Valley, Capel Valley Estates is at Moscow White Corners, right there at the corner of 128. I think Barry Essa Road came and had a desire, expressed a desire to take his private water company for that park and convert it to a public utility, which generated some very fascinating discussions. So there's some issues with the even much larger water utilities out in Barriessa area. So there was a little bit of skepticism by the board. One of Lafco's responsibilities before creating a public entity is to feel confident that it can support itself. So it was, it was good to have a discussion. We also had a very exciting discussion, which I know the town manager enjoyed, of trying to come up with a tagline for Lafco.
I thought that was the tagline.
It is the Local Agency Formation Commission. Apparently, that's not good enough. So as the Chair of Lafco, I ensure there was no subcommittee formed to wordsmith the proposed, and we got one passed right there. So that was, that was very exciting.
What is it?
I don't remember. We'll have to see when it comes back out.
I don't remember.
Wait 10 minutes.
It has to do with managing, managing agency boundaries, protecting agriculture, and reviewing municipal services, something like that.
Tiny hammer.
That's our short, that's the short tagline.
I got Ma Pharma.
What's that?
Ma Pharma.
No.
No? That's man?
Anyway.
Yeah, so anyway, super califragilistic.
Guess that wasn't it?
So Lafco did schedule the second half of the, of the year. The meeting's going to be in August, October, and December, the first Monday of the month of those. And the budget next year will include, because I know you guys want to, Granica streaming of Lafco meetings on the internet, so get ready.
Save your money.
Sign us up.
What's that? Sign you up while we'll do it.
Save your money.
So that was, that was Lafco yesterday.
Any other meeting reports?
I just wanted to report that the watershed
I just wanted to report that the Watershed Information and Conservation Committee meeting was canceled, but we are going to be having a joint meeting in June with the Napa County Flood Control, I believe, and Water Conservation District.
Okay. I'll see you there, I guess. Comments? Any other comments? I did have just three that I want to touch on. I had the pleasure of attending and sharing the ribbon-cutting duties with our Yountville Elementary School Principal and Superintendent Sweeney yesterday morning at the fifth-grade promotion at Yountville Elementary, careful not to call it a graduation, since some of the students are staying for sixth grade, some are moving on to middle school. But I was very impressed by how well-behaved all the students of all ages were for the close-to-one-hour ceremony. But congratulations to all the fifth graders, a very impressive group of young men and women, boys and girls. Also, for those of interest in the art community, just an update on the status of the county's Arts Commission or soon-to-be Art Advisory Group. The date now is June 26th, at which the Board of Supervisors are expected to vote on that entity, and then they will be formally receiving applications. I understand that our local representative, who did have a very short tenure on the Arts Commission, Lisa Adams-Walter, is going to pursue that, and hopefully, there are others in Yountville and Up Valley and throughout the entire county that are going to participate in that to really help the Board of Supervisors and each of us continue to promote the arts in Napa Valley. Last thing I just wanted to mention, thanks on behalf of Auction Napa Valley, even though I had nothing to do with it and I was in Cedar Falls, Iowa, thanks to all the volunteers that make that happen every year. The fact that they made something around $8 million is very impressive, and we know that money comes right back and benefits so many good organizations throughout the county. So, congratulations to all the folks that put that event on and that supported Napa Valley. So, any other comments? No? With that, we'll move on to, we see the future agenda items as listed. Vice Mayor?
I would like to ask the council to consider a request to put an agenda item in the future when it's appropriate for staff to be able to do the work on it, to look at the trash issue of mandatory subscribership to trash, if we could kind of have an understanding of what other jurisdictions do and.
Oh, actually, this one is not a foreign conversation to the town manager and your representative.
Well, I would like to have that as an agenda item at some point in the future.
We will probably need to take a.
I'll work with the town manager to get that agendized in the future for at least discussion, if not something more formal.
Thank you.
So, with those future agenda items as listed, do we have any need for closed session tonight?
We do not, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
That's the answer I was looking for. We'll move on to adjournment to our regularly scheduled meeting of Tuesday, June 19th, at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.